All right, thank you, Jose. Jose Martinez will serve as the city's code enforcement supervisor and comes with over sixteen years of experience as a code and parking enforcement officer. Jose is a P C eight thirty-two certified, receiving his certification from Rio Hondo College located in Whittier. He also received his certification as a state certified housing quality standards specialist inspector. Jose possesses a certificate. Thank you. All righty. So the next one, we have the proclamation for Public Works Week. So at this moment, I will have Vice Mayor Monica Garcia read this out. Let me see, make sure we have the right one. Oh, here we go.
Sam, did you want the staff to stand?
Yeah, why don't... Sam, while I read this, why don't you all make your way up to the front and we'll take a picture. So this proclamation is in honor of the National Public Works Week, May nineteenth through May twenty-fifth, and it states, whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets and highways, sewers, storm drains, streetlights, traffic signals, graffiti abatement, environmental programs, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of the public infrastructure and facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and scale of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform, now therefore, the mayor, Manuel Lozano, along with Mayor Potem, Monica Garcia, council members, Alejandra Avila, Paul Hernandez, Ricardo Pacheco, City Treasurer Maria Contreras, and City Clerk Jean Ayala of the City of Baldwin Park, do hereby proclaim this the week of May nineteenth through twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, as National Public Works Week in the City of Baldwin Park, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And we definitely stress the quality of life, and we thank you for helping us achieve that here in our community.
Yeah, thank you, then. Yeah. Oh, yeah, let me sign it. Oh, no one signed it.
Nobody signed it yet. You want to have them come up here? Sorry, guys, come on. We're a little under par.
Benny?
Meantime, we're signing that, Mayor. I just want to add that the Public Works is doing an excellent job out there. I know at random times, I have personally called them to come out and either fix something that's out on the street or whatever it's needed. They're always willing to go out there, and I feel that they're doing an excellent job. So if we can give them a hand one more time, please.
Okay, Carrillo, ready? Where's Paul at?
There he is.
Appreciate it, guys. Thank you. All right. So at this point, I will ask Councilmember Alejandra Avila, she will read off the proclamation, Recreation and Parks month.
No.
No?
No.
Oh, we're not going to read that one. Which one's that? That's the only one?
We just need signatures.
Oh, okay.
We just need signatures. We can have the part.
All righty. Okay, so then I guess the parts we're going to do at the concert tomorrow, so we're all looking forward to that. All righty. So the next item that we have here is the State of the District and Local Water Supply Update Presentation by Patty Cortez, Director of the Government and Community Affairs from U S G B M W D. So at this point, good evening.
First order of business, I am not Patty Cortez. My name is Tom Love. I'm General Manager of the Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the time to come before you and give you an update primarily on our water supply situation. So I'll talk about from a large regional level, the Colorado River, the state water project, bring it down to a local level here in the San Gabriel Valley, and then answer the question I get asked a lot, is the drought really over? And so I'll go through this as quickly as I can, leave hopefully some time for questions if there are any at the conclusion. First of all, I think most of the council, if not all of the council, are very familiar with the Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District. We cover about nineteen cities in the San Gabriel Valley, almost a million people. We are governed by five board members elected by division. Unfortunately, Director Santana, our newest director, Jennifer Santana, was not able to be here, as well as Director Albert Contreras, but we do have our Board Chairman, Ed Chavez, here today, representing part of the service area. We have about twenty-seven retailers, one of which is the largest retailer in Baldwin Park, Valley County Water District. Jose Martinez is here, and I believe at least one of your board members is here tonight as well. Jose asked me to make sure the public knows that this was recently mailed out. This is the Valley County Water District Consumer Confidence Notice. A lot of information here about your water, your water quality. So if you get this, have questions, the numbers and contacts for Valley County Water District are in this brochure. District has been around for sixty years. We will be celebrating our sixtieth anniversary in January of two thousand twenty.
Wow.
We were formed as a result of adjudication or litigation over the San Gabriel River that was filed by the City of Long Beach, Compton, and Central Basin Municipal Water District back in the nineteen fifties. Before I get into the water supply, I did want to talk about some of the efforts that we have coming before us. The Board has recently adopted a strategic plan, four primary goals. I'll start from the bottom. Our outreach and community engagement, which I'm doing tonight, that's part of our plan. We have to continue to communicate with the community to make sure that we are managing the resource, the precious resource of water. We need, in order to do that, we need a efficient workforce and governance, so that is part of our strategic plan. Of course, financial integrity and proper financial management is paramount. And at the bottom line is we're really all about water reliability, water supply reliability, and resiliency. And as we look at droughts and climate change, that is becoming even more important to all of us in the water industry and all of our communities. So where's our water come from in the San Gabriel Valley? We are fortunate. Typically, we get about eighty percent of our water from the local rainfall. It percolates into the groundwater basin. We pump it out, meets our water supply needs, and we usually need about twenty percent supplemental water from imported water supplies, which comes from the state water project primarily and Metropolitan Water District. The last five years, this percentage has changed significantly because of the dryness here locally. Even when we had a wet year in two thousand seventeen in Northern California, we were still very, very dry here in the San Gabriel Valley. So that local supply, that eighty percent, actually went down over the last six years. So where are we on the state water project in Colorado River? Very good right now. The state water project, Northern California precipitation above normal, the runoff forecast, almost one hundred and forty-seven percent of normal. Oroville, after the spillway incident in two thousand seventeen, that was repaired in two thousand eighteen, Oroville filled to the top about two or three weeks ago. Oroville was full. They're starting to release now because demands are increasing, but the state water project allocation is seventy percent. Might say a hundred percent would be better, but given the environmental conditions, the protection of fish in the delta, seventy percent is a very, very good number for the allocation on the state water project. Colorado River also supplies Southern California. Metropolitan Water District built the Colorado River Aqueduct in the nineteen thirties. Prior to this winter, the Colorado River system was in severe danger of going into shortage in two thousand twenty twenty. In fact, there was a national agreement or interstate agreement signed by President Trump a few months ago that laid out the plan, if the river goes into shortage, how all the states, the seven states in the Colorado Basin, would share that shortage. But it turns out, this was one of the best water years on the Colorado River watershed in over twenty years, and the runoff forecast is one hundred and twenty-four percent of average. You know, shortage is still something they're concerned about, but this has put a lot more water into Lake Mead and Lake Powell. It will not fill Lake Mead by any means because it is so low, but it is a step in the right Regarding Metropolitan Water District, one of the things Metropolitan Water District has done over the last several decades is invested a lot of money, billions of dollars, in the ability and facilities to store additional water, including water in their storage area on this side of the San Andreas Fault. State Water Project crosses the San Andreas, Colorado River Aqueduct crosses the San Andreas, so they're trying to get as much water storage here locally. In two thousand twelve, Metropolitan Water District had the most water they've ever had in their history in storage, two point seven million acre feet. It was fortunate it was there because what happened in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, that started the historic drought that we've gone through. And they used that storage, as they should during the drought, to meet the water supply needs. Two thousand sixteen was an okay year. Two thousand seventeen was a phenomenal water year in Northern California, record precipitation in the Northern Sierras, and they were able to fairly quickly get their storage back up. Two thousand eighteen was a dry year, so we have a wet year, then we have a dry year. It was a dry year, but they were able to maintain their storage level. It ended up balancing out at the end of the year. They are forecasting this year, given the good water year on the state water project and Colorado River, they will finish the year at three point three million acre feet, again, a record level of water in storage. Now, you might breathe a sigh of relief, but we do not know when, or how long, or how severe the next drought will be, but we know there will be another drought. So we continue to encourage conservation. Locally, this shows the rainfall in San Gabriel Valley over the last about eighteen years, seventeen, eighteen years. You can see oh four oh five, it was one of the wettest years in nearly a hundred years in the San Gabriel Valley, and I'll show you a chart later on. You'll see what happened to the groundwater in oh four oh five, how well it rebounded. But since then, you might say we were in a six-year drought. We say we're in about a fourteen-year drought. We've only had one, two, three, and now four years that were above normal over that period. So we continue to recover from the local drought here in the San Gabriel Valley. This is my favorite place to talk about, the holy grail of basin management in the San Gabriel Valley, the Baldwin Park Key Well. So just to explain what a groundwater basin is, if you imagine a huge bathtub that's lined with bedrock under our feet, it's tipped a little bit with the lower end at the Whittier Narrows where the water will spill down the San Gabriel River, and you fill that bathtub with sand and gravel, and if you pour a bucket of water into that bathtub, is it going to stay on top? No, it's going to soak into the sand and gravel. The bedrock traps it, and that creates our groundwater basin. Our primary measurement for basin management is a well in Baldwin Park called the Baldwin Park Key Well. I'll show you the chart in a minute. So that bathtub full of sand and gravel, we have a whole bunch of straws that are poked into that sand and gravel by all the water companies, the producers, they use to extract the groundwater when it's needed. So this is the Baldwin Park Key Well, and I think I just turned off, pushed the wrong button, I apologize. I need to get the laser pointer to work. There we go. So this is over about, a little over a decade. This is the oh four oh five year. You can see how the level of the groundwater came all the way up to over two hundred and fifty feet in one year. Very good, a very wet year. Again, eleven, twelve, wet years. It recovered well, and this is the drought. And we did use our storage in the basin during the drought, and we hit a new historic low last November, the lowest level the basin has ever been. What we have been doing over the years is we have been buying and storing imported water. We've been buying it from Metropolitan Water District. So this darker blue shaded area shows the imported water that's stored in the ground. Had we not had that, the key well would have dropped to a much lower level, and certain communities would have had their wells go dry. But we were able to forestall that. We do have imported water in storage, and you can see the basin level is starting to come back up, both with additional imported water being supplied, as well as a good year locally. The county is still releasing water from the San Gabriel Canyon Reservoirs. That's being captured in the river spreading grounds, the Santa Fe Spreading Grounds, and that will, those releases will last at least through the end of August. And that basin level, we hope, will continue to improve. But what we see in the summer months is people start using more water, the wells start pumping more water, and it kind of balances itself out over the summer months. I do want to say during this period of the drought, this community, the entire San Gabriel Valley responded extremely well to the call for conservation. Production, groundwater production from the basin dropped from two hundred and forty thousand acre feet per year prior to the drought to as low as one hundred and ninety thousand acre feet during the drought. It is creeping back up a little bit now that the governor's drought declaration was lifted over a year ago, but we'd like to encourage the communities to continue their efforts on water conservation. And to that end, we have several programs to help the residents and the community continue to conservation, turf removal, leak detection, smart gardening classes, water shed restoration events, which help our healthy watershed, which helps our water supply, water bottle fill stations, and city partnerships for outreach and so forth. And again, our water, our sixtieth anniversary celebration, the kickoff event will be our Water Fest, which will occur on October twelfth at Arcadia County Park, and that will kick off our celebration, and we certainly will continue our message of water conservation as we move forward. And with that, be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Are you with the Metropolitan Water District?
No. So Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District.
Oh, Upper San Gabriel. Okay.
We are a member agency of Metropolitan Water District.
Okay, got it, because the direct, okay. Now, out of curiosity, so the drought, in other words, so we're still technically under drought in this particular region or not?
So the state of, the U S Drought Monitor has now removed the entire state of California from drought conditions, but if you look locally in the San Gabriel Valley and you look at precipitation over the last several years, we are still well below normal in terms of our, you know, ten-year, fourteen-year average precipitation. And so that hole in the basin that I showed you, we're still trying to recover. I'll go back to that very quickly because I think it's important. In terms of basin management, this shaded zone up here, the reddish shaded zone, that's where we prefer to be for what we call a healthy groundwater supply in the region. And you can see, we're not even quite there, and we've been well below that for a number of years. We're still trying to recover from the drought, and our precipitation is, we're still in drought conditions here in the San Gabriel Valley. So conservation is essential to allow us, whatever water we're purchasing, whatever water has, rain has fallen, the more of that we can keep in the basin, the healthier the basin level will be. The way to do that is through conservation.
Yeah, I think it's important. I'm glad you touched it. Make sure we places in the city newsletter, maybe contact you for, because I think it's important. A lot of us have literally forgotten, and lessons we continue on to do prior to the actual drought itself being announced, and it's important, especially something like this, I mean, long-term effect, I mean, wow. Yes.
If I could ask, I noticed that we have water that we're getting from the Colorado River, the state water projects, and local groundwater. Do you think that in the future, being that there will always be droughts, will we ever look at D-Salt for, you know, coordinating with other cities, possibly to create D-Salt districts and trade off where, say the beach cities would trade off their water if we bought D-Salt water from them and trade off with state water, or some type of coordination like that?
That's, that's very, that's the way we would do destalinization. We are not coastal. We don't have any of our district on the coast, but if we were to evaluate Ocean D-Salt, we are updating our Integrated Water Resources Plan, just kicking that off, and then we will look at that portfolio, that menu of water supply options, and then evaluate those by a priority of what's the most practical cost, expense, practicality of implementation. And Ocean D-Salt is certainly on the list where we could coordinate with a beach city, Huntington Beach, or one of the water districts along the coast, help them with the capital funding, be an equity partner, and exchange their M W D supply for that water, and that's the way we could participate.
Now, doesn't San Diego already have that, or an operation of D-Salt?
Yeah. Carlsbad, San Diego has a fifty million gallon per day plant. It is built and operated by formerly Poseidon, they've just sold. So it's a private public partnership. So the private company has built, financed the plant, and they sell the water to the San Diego County.
Now, out of curiosity, so what does that feed into, population-wise?
I'm not sure of San Diego's population, but to put it in perspective, the total water use in our valley here, that would represent almost twenty-five percent of our total water use in the San Gabriel Valley.
Wow. Wow. Incredible.
So, and just one other comment on Ocean D-Salt, it requires a phenomenal amount of energy and is very costly. So as you're looking at that, it is the most expensive source of water San Diego has, much more expensive than the supply from Metropolitan Water District.
Wow, thank you. Very important subject. I'm, thank you for being here today, and also if we could share some of the information here for our newsletter for the community and maybe place it on the website. I mean, water is everything. Water is life, and obviously, we need to make sure that we care for it. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Excellent presentation. All right, the next one's the United Ways, everyone in campaign housing strategies presentation by Beatriz Sandoval and Gabriela Garcia. Thank you. United Way. Thank you. Good evening. Hi, Beatriz. Good evening.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Gabriela is otra organizadora, pero ella es nuestra intérprete. You want to introduce yourself?
Oh, she's going to translate. All right, thank you.
Yes, I'm the interpreter. My name is Monica Corial. This is Beatriz Sandoval, and Gabriela Garcia is another campaigner, but she's not here this evening.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Well, I introduce myself in English without, it's okay with you. Okay. Thank you. I want to say thank you for having me. Thank you, councilmembers, Paul Hernandez, Monica Garcia, and thank you, Mayor, for having me, Ricardo, thank you. And I want to say a special thank you, Councilmember Alejandra Garcia, for inviting me. We are talking about this crisis. And can we turn off the first, the first slide, please? Or the second one? Oh. I made my presentation in Spanish. We had a community member who speak only Spanish, is why I invited her to interpret it. So nosotros somos una gran coalición de organizaciones sin fines de lucro, envueltas en el atraer soluciones a la falta de vivienda y a las personas que están viviendo en las calles.
We're a large coalition of lots of nonprofits that have been working together to address the issue of homelessness and folks that have lack of access to affordable housing.
Nosotros tenemos un gran número de coaliciones y organizaciones sin fines de lucro, pero también tenemos desarrolladores sin fines de lucro y miembros electos como senadora Susan Rubio y como la asambleísta Blanca Rubio dentro de esta gran coalición que tiene más de cien personas, de cien organizaciones y personas dando servicios públicos como parte de esta gran campaña.
We're not only a coalition of nonprofit organizations, but also nonprofit developers, and also elected officials like Senator Susan Rubio.
And Assemblees.
And Assemblees.
Blanca.
Blanca Rubio, who are also partaking in this coalition.
Also, also this city last year signed the resolution, firmaron la resolución para ser parte de esta campaña como una ciudad que está dentro de trabajar para atraer soluciones a la campaña.
And last year, this city signed a resolution to be part of this campaign to bring a resolution to this crisis.
Bueno, esta es una crisis, aparte de estar llamando que es una crisis de personas viviendo en la calle, también estamos llamando que esta es una crisis de falta de accesibilidad, de falta de poder mantener los gastos diarios con el alto incremento de la renta y también el nivel en que ha permanecido el ingreso de nuestras familias.
So we're not just calling this a crisis of homelessness, but also a crisis of accessibility to affordable housing, and then also access to wages that will help to maintain a certain standard of living with the way that prices are rising.
Las rentas actualmente están siendo tan costosas para nuestras familias como lo mencionaba. Esto está siendo una línea directa para que no solamente personas que no tienen trabajo, pero es familias completas que no pueden pagar el alto costo de la renta estén poniéndose en alto riesgo y poniendo riesgo a sus hijos al vivir en la calle.
So rents are rising so radically that this presents an issue not just for individuals not being able to access housing, but a whole family being at risk, and parents not being able to afford the housing that it takes to have their family in a safe place.
Tenemos que en la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, este número que para mí, cada unidad de este número, cincuenta y ocho mil novecientos treinta y seis personas tienen una cara, tienen un nombre, y son parte de nuestro vecindario. Es terrible y doloroso ver este número en crecimiento cada año.
So this is a number that to me represents people with faces, with names, with a story, and it's really terrible and heartbreaking to know that each one of these fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-six people are at risk in our county.
La falta de asequibilidad en el pago de nuestras viviendas, en el pago de un lugar estable donde vivir, ha llevado a incrementar este número de personas un doce por ciento del año pasado a este año.
So this year, this has increased by twelve percent from last year to this year, and really represents that lack of access to adequate wages.
Este número podría ser abrumador si queremos encontrar una unidad donde todas estas personas puedan vivir dentro, pero nosotros sabemos que hay un número como un cuarto de, un cuarto de estas personas necesitan vivienda urgente, sacarlas de la calle, ponerlas en una vivienda temporal, en lo que estas personas son llevadas o a vivir en una vivienda de apoyo. No sé si ustedes están relacionados con lo que es una vivienda de apoyo, pero es un techo más servicios que puedan ayudar a reintegrar a las familias y a las personas a la sociedad.
So this number can be really overwhelming, but we know that just one-fourth of those are folks who are experiencing chronic homelessness, and those are folks that need supportive housing. And I don't know if you're familiar with the idea of supportive housing, but that is the idea that they are, have given access to a home, a roof over their heads, and then also the support services that they need to get out of chronic homelessness.
En otro, los otros tres cuartos de personas que están experimentando la falta de vivienda, ellos necesitan, los servicios, necesitan servicios para restablecer su hogar, pero también necesitan una pronta respuesta a una vivienda, y también necesitan acceso a la vivienda asequible.
And then the other three-fourths are people who need a quick solution to not having housing, and so they need that housing that is quick and accessible, and then also the accessible or the wages necessary to stay housed.
Este número es para nuestra ciudad. Es el número que pudimos obtener de Laza ayer. Bueno, el catorce de junio dieron estos números. Lamentablemente, en nuestra ciudad tenemos doscientas sesenta y seis personas que actualmente están viviendo en la calle, visibles.
So these are numbers that we obtained on June fourteenth from Laza. So these are recent numbers, and they are reporting that they've, that we have two hundred and sixty-six unhoused people in the city of Baldwin Park.
De estos doscientas sesenta y seis, son ochenta y nueve personas que necesitan vivienda de apoyo urgente.
And of those two hundred and sixty-six people, eighty-nine are people who need urgent housing and supportive housing.
Nosotros hemos estado trabajando en traer los recursos, y también la ciudad ha tenido un trabajo muy bueno en traer los recursos. Han sido mucho esfuerzo en tener un plan que pueda ser aprobado y que pueda traer esos servicios y que sean accesibles para nuestra gente, y estos son a través de la medida H que fue aprobada en el dos mil dieciséis.
So luckily, there have been many organizations who have been working on the resources that we're going to need to address the situation, and so one of those is Measure H.
Nosotros no tenemos los recursos que tiene la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, que son recursos de la medida Triple H, pero aún así hicimos una encuesta donde los votantes que, los votantes han aprobado vivienda de apoyo en sus propios vecindarios. No están opuestos, están a favor de que se traiga vivienda de apoyo a su vecindario.
So although we don't have So although we don't have the resources that the city of LA has like the HHH, we did go ahead and do a survey of residents and voters and they showed overwhelming support for housing and supportive housing in their own communities. They're not against it, they're in favor.
Nuestra campaña tiene estrategias muy importantes que han tenido éxito de traer a la gente dentro de esta campaña, dentro de este apoyo. Y tenemos estos recursos como humanizar a las personas que están experimentando homeless a través de cuando nos cuentan sus historias, que son historias realmente que nos conmueven, que mueven nuestra compasión.
So our campaign has several strategies. One of those first ones is to humanize the situation, to humanize the people who are experiencing homelessness, to hear their stories, to hear what they're going through and see the humanity in them.
Y también tenemos un equipo donde estamos trabajando localmente. Yo soy una organizadora, parte del Valle de San Gabriel, organizadora a nivel comunitario, pero también estoy en otras ciudades como Whittier, Downey y otras ciudades del Valle de San Gabriel.
And we have a team of community organizers. I am a community organizer working in the San Gabriel Valley and also Whittier and Downey to work on this campaign.
Y estos recursos no nada más los estamos usando como comunidad. También queremos que ustedes los usen como un apoyo para atraer estos servicios y traer estos recursos para nuestra comunidad.
And we're here to do that work, but also mainly as a resource and we hope that you see us as a resource to bring these resources to the community to do this work.
Nosotros sabemos que el support housing está comprobado, que trabaja, está comprobado un 90% que trabaja. Tenemos las historias, tenemos los datos de las personas que han ido a través de la vivienda de apoyo.
So we know that supportive housing works. In 90% of cases, it works. We know from research, we know from the stories of people who are experiencing it.
Y nosotros sabemos que los recursos también ya están aquí como para ponerlos a la disposición de nuestra comunidad en necesidad, pero nosotros también los necesitamos a ustedes.
And we also know that we've got the resources available to be able to do this work, but what we need is you.
Y nosotros estamos invitando a la gente, a la gente que está atrás de mí, a que hable con sus vecinos, hable con sus amigos, hable con sus compañeros de trabajo, pero también que estén pendientes de nuestros entrenamientos, cómo hablar con otros vecinos, cómo hablar aquí con ustedes, con otras personas electos de otras comunidades.
So we're inviting the community to take part in conversations with their friends or families or coworkers and their neighbors, but also to be aware that we're holding trainings so they can learn how to talk to their community, how to talk to you, come and talk to you about it as well.
Y ese también es un llamado a la acción, no nada más de ustedes, sino también de la comunidad que hable con ustedes de lo que ellos consideran que es bueno para nuestra comunidad, que ustedes consideren esto como un recurso para que ustedes hablen con nuestra comunidad, que hablen con la comunidad a la que ustedes están sirviendo para atraer esta aformabilidad y esta asequibilidad de vivienda para que podamos resolver juntos esta crisis de vivienda que tenemos.
So we consider that the way to empower the community to learn how to talk about it, to feel that they can come to you and tell you about what is happening and then also that you can see us as a resource for all of that information that you will need and then also to address the fact that we have a housing crisis.
Nosotros en Baldwin Park, desafortunadamente, pero espero que muy pronto podamos cambiar esos números. Nosotros no tenemos una vivienda de apoyo en proyecto como en esta presentación dice que Canoga Park está trabajando en una vivienda. Ellos tienen otros recursos, pero nosotros sabemos que hay otras ciudades en el Valle de San Gabriel que ya están trabajando en viviendas de apoyo como la Ciudad del Monte. Podemos crear esa relación para hacer eso realidad en nuestra propia comunidad.
So unfortunately, right now in Baldwin Park, we don't have the supportive housing as it says in the presentation. Canoga Park, for instance, is an example of where they are working on supportive housing. And they do have resources that we don't have here, but we know that there are communities in the San Gabriel Valley that have been able to access resources and get started on this work. Almani, for example, being one. And so that's part of a network that we can start to create to collaborate with the communities around us.
Nosotros tenemos como, también como recursos estamos dando reuniones, tenemos reuniones donde nos educamos, educamos a la comunidad si tienen preguntas. También hacemos reuniones en los hogares. Tenemos un sistema de organización bastante fuerte que ha estado dando mucho funcionamiento, no nada más aquí en la ciudad de Baldwin Park, pero en todo el condado de Los Ángeles.
So we have a system, a network of strategies that are working not just here in Baldwin Park, but across the San Gabriel Valley. So for instance, we'll have informational sessions and workshops and then we'll also host house discussions and workshops where people get together and talk about these issues.
Ustedes están invitados a venir a cualquiera de estas reuniones como representantes de nuestra comunidad. Estamos muy abiertos a que ustedes vengan y escuchen de la propia comunidad cuáles son sus necesidades. Como les dije, la vivienda no es un recurso como usted mencionó ahorita. El agua es algo tan importante para cualquier familia, para cualquier padre de familia. La vivienda es lo que le da vida y le pone una pared al amor de un hogar y a una comunidad.
So we invite you to come to any one of these meetings and as a representative of your city and to be able to come and hear what the community is saying and what their needs are. And you know, we just talked about water as being such an important resource and the same goes for a family's income that really gives them the ability to go on and to be a strong unit.
Ustedes saben, yo soy un miembro de esta comunidad. Yo estoy segura que más de uno de ustedes tiene mi número de teléfono, mi correo electrónico y siempre estoy abierta a cualquier conversación, pero también estoy abierta a ser ese puente de comunicación entre la comunidad y ustedes y entre ese puente de conversación entre nuestras necesidades de vivienda y ustedes como nuestros representantes electos.
And as you may know, I'm a member of this community. Some of you may even have my email or my phone number. And so I'm open to receiving and being a bridge between you and the community and expressing those needs back and forth and being able to be that bridge between what we're doing and what needs to happen.
Si ustedes tienen alguna pregunta, estoy abierta a la conversación ahorita o después, igual al público. Vean mi cara, soy una persona que vive en esta comunidad, soy de esta comunidad, vivo en esta comunidad y amo esta comunidad y yo puedo estar aquí para contestar cualquier pregunta que ustedes tengan referente a la experiencia que están pasando las personas que viven en la calle.
So I live in this community, I'm part of this community. I want everyone to see my face and know that I'm here as a resource. You can ask me questions and talk to me. I love this community, I'm a part of this community and I want to be able to be here to answer questions.
Nada más quiero agradecer su tiempo y su disposición de escuchar mi presentación.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ricardo Pacheco.
First, Beatriz Sandoval, I want to thank you for a very outstanding presentation. You gave a lot of good facts and figures and a lot of information that I think the city council or our city staff can use. And I want to thank all of your supporters that are here, everybody that supports this. Round of applause for all of you coming out and being here. And I know that Beatriz and myself and Alejandra Avila, we've spoken with you and I think other council members have on this issue before you've come here and we're supportive to finding some solution to the homeless issue that's out there. We're trying to work with you, work together. And now that you have more resources, we can work closer together to try to find solutions that we have just here in our community. I gave information a couple of meetings ago that I got from Beatriz about Baldwin Park, that 60% of us are low-income, very struggling to find that, be able to pay the rent here in our community. So we will try to sit down with you, we'll try to find solutions. I'm committed to working on that. First, I'd like to ask and I'll propose to staff to have one of these information meetings that the staff can sponsor and working with you to do that information out to more of the public that we can talk about. And also, in our future housing projects, as we develop the ENAs and the information to do the housing, that we consult with all of you to give us some input about what we're proposing and the kinds of housing that we are proposing and talk about rent and trying to make rent more affordable at the level. And I know that Beatriz and I, we spoke and we talked about affordability that you felt that the city had a different view than I think most people do. So we need to come together and kind of find out what that level of affordability is so we could provide that kind of housing here in the community. So I'll have staff work with you and reach out to you to talk about any projects we have in the future for housing or what else we can do. We also have a housing department that we can also sit with to talk about resources that we have. I don't know if Suzie Rolas is here somewhere? I guess not, but we do have a housing person. We have a housing department that we could work and talk about resources that we have here in our community. And also to again, to have a follow-up with the organization to talk about this with the community, right? Thank you, any other council members?
Yes, thanks, Alejandra Avila.
First of all, thank you Beatriz and United Way and all of the people here supporting this program. I completely agree with what you are saying. We are definitely in a large need of affordable housing for our community. It is heartbreaking to go out there and see homeless people, homeless families. I work for the school district, therefore I see a lot of homeless families, children, that I know at night they're going to a hotel if they're lucky for the night. Therefore, as a community, we need to unite. They are human beings just like us. Everybody deserves a nice warm house. So we need to work together as a community. We need to demand of this council, myself, that we find a solution. Of course, we can't help everybody, but we can help some, at least some of the population here in Baldwin Park. So I'm asking that we unite as a council, that we really work hard and look for affordability, that we bring in projects that our community can afford to live in and that they're proud to live in. We need supportive housing where they can have wraparound services. We need health, a lot of these people that are homeless may need mental health service. They need a lot of support services, bottom line. So I am completely in with you, to work with you and to support your program and to support and move forward so that we can get affordable housing here in Baldwin Park. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Just first of all, I want to thank, thank you very much. And as you know, the Californians voted for Proposition H, which is passed. And I know that we're working in conjunction with three other cities for the funding. I think we were allocated, how much was that money, was that two or three million for the region? For the study? Let me finish.
Check one-two. Yes, we were allocated $50,000 to conduct a study and we've applied for several grants. So hopefully, we will have some pretty good news in the next few weeks in regards to some of the grants. We've already received two grants. A grant with the city of South Almani, Almani and Baldwin Park to conduct the study as well as an additional grant for just Baldwin Park to conduct the study.
Yeah, do me a big fair, please send a newsletter because of course, this city has always been on the forefront list like every other city, addressing issues of homeless and of course, some of the individuals that we've had are placed up in motels for the evening and so forth. And of course, we know that, you know what, the housing real estate has just skyrocketed. I mean, it's almost impossible for youth or individuals that are graduating out of college to be able to afford that, let alone the rent in itself. So and keep us up to par in that area, okay? Thank you very much.
This is part of mi llamado a ustedes, traer juntos. Yo sé que el departamento de housing y parkas y recreation está trabajando muy duro para traer los fondos, pero también quiero llamar a la unidad porque ellos cuando van a pedir estos fondos no están solos. Estamos nosotros como organización, estamos nosotros como una comunidad, pero también necesitamos que ustedes, la otra parte del cuerpo de esta ciudad que son ustedes, estén buscando las otras soluciones que van a traer más estabilidad a nuestras familias, especialmente en las cuestiones de dinero, que cuando esto no pasa, cuando esta falta de recursos no llega a nuestras familias, estamos cayendo en situaciones que van a ser más difíciles de solucionar.
Alright.
And also, mayor, when we do bring in these builders, that bring in affordable housing, we need to make sure that it stays affordable housing because I know it starts off as affordable housing, but little by little, they start raising the rent and before you know it, some people are in a fixed income. That is no longer affordable. So we need to make sure that it is maintained affordable because fixed income, we all know, a fixed income, you only get so much money a year, maybe two cents if you're lucky, a dollar. So we need to make sure it stays affordable.
Alright, okay, thank, yes.
I just have one comment and I know we'll move on. But I just want to thank you for your presentation and for being advocates for homeless here in our community. And we definitely need that voice and we definitely need that collaboration. And I think that's what your call is for, that coordination, that collaboration. And I agree with you and I think that in these most recent efforts, you know, with Prop H and then the city of Los Angeles, HHH, it's really been to help coordinate whatever resources are out there and I think there's always been that disconnect. And so I do hope that through these efforts, we can get past that and have a more coordinated effort here in our city and also in the region. I do want to mention that we have focused on bringing affordable housing to help families in our community. An example is the project right adjacent to City Hall here. That's a project that not everybody supported, but when it came online and it was constructed, 70 units, you know, became available. We received 1,000 applications for this affordable housing project. And that's part of the solution. I know it's not the solution, but it's part of the solution because we're trying to provide housing to families that would otherwise not be able to afford the rents or the markages here in our city. We're also entertaining other affordable housing projects, which I think will be part of the solution. But again, I think you're right, it's about coordinating the resources and being able to, you know, just take a more holistic approach to the homeless. And you're right, our housing department, we've been providing vouchers and things like that, but we need more of a sustainable approach, right? So I want to thank you for your efforts.
And just one more thing, Beatriz, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do recall that this particular project that we have here, yes, it was brought in as affordable housing, but that's one of the companies that started raising the rent when we have people on fixed income. Is that correct? Because we had some speakers come to the meetings.
Desafortunadamente, cada semana vienen miembros de la comunidad a nuestra parroquia. A mí como un líder, puedes decir, en mi comunidad. Do you want to?
When you're ready.
Diza, este edificio, vinieron personas que viven en este edificio, tienen un ingreso fijo y ellas, ha llegado el incremento, tanto el incremento de su renta que están pagando ya casi el 90% de su ingreso. Viven en este edificio.
So that's a good example as it starts affordable housing, but then they start raising the rent.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so as a member of the community, I see every week families that do come and that rent has been raised up to where they're spending about 90% of their income on the housing. And they're on a fixed income, yes.
This family come from this building? So I don't know exactly who is the developer and what is the terms from this building, but it's not affordable, some units are affordable, but we are talking about low-income families, not like affordable families. And thus, it's more painful because there's seniors, especially seniors, who now live in the cars or in the house and someone else.
Alrighty, okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on, but I want to thank you very much for this. And thank you also for the translation, thank you, that's a lot. Alright. Alrighty, so at this point, we don't have anything else. I'll open up the public communication, anyone wishing to speak, approximately three minutes. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Mark Flores. Been giving music scholarships to the high school students here for 10 years now. We're having... We're having an event this Saturday. If you're able to make it, it would be great. I left some flyers on the back podium there. If I didn't give to you, I know I gave to many people, but not to all. And also, tomorrow is going to be a great band at concerts in the park.
Yes.
So everyone should go and watch Queen Nation, because they're awesome.
Yes.
And I'd like to thank the city council, all its members, for helping us and promoting us and your support when we do our foundation events and things and granting us time to listen to our scholarship winners. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, hold on.
Hello, city council, residents of Baldwin Park. I hope all the accusations that are going around the country and the cities are correct. Thank you very much for letting us know that we, city council people, sometimes are one way or the other. On number 20, 19, 20, and 21, the young lady over here on the end is going to do another tax assessment. I got to say it right, because you people understand nothing but illegal words that everybody invents. Is that all you people know? How to tax us, Baldwin Park residents? You people live here. Wait, I should say, you should live here. We know the mayor don't live here. We know the attorney doesn't, the CEO doesn't. These people don't either. And these ladies, I don't know. But don't you guys get tired? You tax us every year. Don't you understand? That's why cities go bankrupt. You only can get so much blood out of a turnip. You can't keep draining it forever. And you people hope, and I'm pretty sure you all hope, that you can drain it forever. That's why those accusations that are going around in the paper, I hope, are true. Because you people need to get an understanding that you work for 85,000 or how many people in this city. You don't work for you as an individual. That's what's wrong in the United States of America right now. The president wants you to work for him. We work for all of us. And you people need to understand that. You're one of the low-group people in the country, so why can't you understand that? Every time somebody comes up here and asks the city to join something, you people join it, and what do you do? You tax us so we can pay for it. And we get, they raise our water, our taxes, our utilities over here every darn year. Don't you guys get tired of doing that to your own people? Excuse the expression. But that doesn't matter. You don't care. Because if you did, you wouldn't do that. And I hope all you people up here understand that I'm not the only one getting taxed. You are too. Of course, you people that don't live here, you don't really care. But I know one thing. You guys don't listen to nobody. If you five people make a decision, you don't care if it affects the whole world. You make it. Every time we come here, people want to join this, join that, and you people join it. Where are you getting all this money? Oops, I'm out of time. Sorry, Mayor.
All right, move along with public communication.
Hello, my name's Kevin Rooney. I'm a Baldwin Park resident. I just have three items I want to talk to. My neighbor doesn't speak English, so I told her I would come here and ask for her. The city tree that's on the sidewalk, the roots, the tree grew wrong and the roots are on top. It's growing towards her house and soon it's going to be affecting, like, her house. It's going to make the house uneven. All the city did when I called was come out and grind down the sidewalks. They didn't do nothing about the roots that are already in her yard, about two feet away from her structure, her house. So if you could do something about that. The second thing is, I believe I talked to Shannon about it when it first came out on Hallwood and Main. He said everything's legal on that corner, having that bubble corner. Said it was all by law, it's all good, and the fire engines can make it. I talked to the fire department. They got to go down Phelan every time now to go around the school, because they say they can't compromise that corner because there's always oncoming traffic. So it's very dangerous. Time is of an essence when it comes to the fire department and paramedics coming to help somebody at those schools. And it's taken them twice as long to get down there now. So if you could please do something, rework that corner or something, it would be appreciated. The last thing I wanted to talk about was the $7 million settlement that was against the city, that we got against our city for the old police chief. I just want to know how it'll affect us as residents. Will our taxes be increased because of it, or how do we plan to pay for it? So if you can answer those questions, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name's Jose Martinez. I'm the general manager of Valley County Water District. I know Mr. Love kind of filled all our cups full of water knowledge tonight, so I won't go on too long here. But one of the questions you asked, Mayor, was, you know, is the drought over? In the document that Mr. Love referred to, our consumer confidence report that went out to all 12,500 of our customers, we have several frequently asked questions. One of those is, the drought over? Where does our water come from? With all this rain, why hasn't my water bill gone down? And certainly, as a public agency, we can only charge our customers the true cost to provide that water to them. But we have a couple of good, frequently asked questions that I often hear customers coming in on the phone. So this is a really good document that certainly we try to make it as attractive as possible. So don't throw it away. Read it. And if you have any questions, certainly we have customer service in English and Spanish, which can answer them. We will have this document translated and available on our website at the end of this month. If there's any questions.
Thank you. Jose, if you guys could maybe run something in our newsletter as well.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Doing a good job.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Natalia Chavez y yo soy residente de Baldwin Park por 42 años. Voy a necesitar, solo son dos mensajitos que quiero darles, pero voy a necesitar que alguien lo traduzca para inglés.
Can we have someone for translator? You want to do it from there, Lulu? Okay, all righty.
Muy bien. Primero es que me da mucha pena que estemos nosotros, o aceptemos nosotros, ustedes y nosotros, el público, aceptemos una lugar de abortos en este pueblo de Baldwin Park.
One momento. Go, you want to go ahead and go there?
Yes, my name is Natalie Chavez, Chavez, I'm sorry. And I'm very embarrassed that in our community, we are looking into implementing an abortion clinic.
Segundo es que nada más quiero que sepan nuestro amable público y ustedes, que Planned Parenthood no es una clínica familiar de planeación, sino que es un lugar donde matan a los niños y que nosotros pagamos impuestos para que ellos reciban 51 millones de dólares al año.
One momento, thank you.
I just wanted to say that Planned Parenthood is not just for Planned Parenthood. It's a clinic where they kill babies and they use about $58 million.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one million dollars.
Every year.
In their pockets.
All right, thank you.
And yo digo, qué podemos hacer, qué pueden hacer ustedes al respecto, verdad? Entonces nosotros lo único que hacemos es ponernos allí en frente de donde lo quieren poner. También vamos todas a Escovina, en el monte, para evitar que nuestras criaturas lleguen. Es una lástima ver nuestras niñas de 13, 14 años con su pareja, que van a abortar los bebés ahí, porque les dicen que es gratis, pero ya lo hemos pagado nosotros.
Okay, one momento, go ahead.
We also want to know what you can do in this respect to assist us in this matter. We go to Escovina and Almane to avoid these types of clinics. And it's set to see our 13- and 14-year-old girls with their partners going in to conduct abortions.
Si ustedes, pienso que ustedes saben que no es una clínica familiar, que es un lugar donde matan nuestros niños y donde se venden los órganos de nuestros hijos, porque los abortan hasta después de seis meses para obtener los, las partes de nuestro cuerpo para venderlas. Es para negocio. Entonces, es muy triste que nosotros aquí en Baldwin Park tengamos esa clase de clínica que la señora es tan millonaria por teniendo esos lugares, que no son como una persona aquí me lo dijo que era una clínica establecida. No, es un matadero de niños que tenemos y nosotros estamos con nuestra vista cerrada.
Okay, all right, one momento, go ahead.
This is not a Planned Parenthood clinic. This is a clinic where they kill babies and use organs for their monetary benefits.
No sé si ustedes pueden hacer algo, pero de todas maneras vamos a buscar cómo hacer algo nosotros en la comunidad. Pero si ustedes están de acuerdo de apoyarnos, estamos más que agradecidas por tenerles a ustedes. Muchas gracias. Buenas noches.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
I don't know if you can do something about it, but we are willing to do something about it and hope that we have your support. Thank you and good night.
All right, thank you very much, all right.
Mi nombre es Sofía Lara. Tengo 44 años viviendo aquí en Baldwin Park. Todos ustedes merecen mi respeto. Ustedes no estuvieran en este mundo si sus mamás hubieran decidido que ese bebé no viene al mundo. Aplausos a sus mamás de que tuvieron la valentía, la fortaleza, de decir, mi hijo vive. Estos niños no tienen voz, no tienen quien hable por ellos. Respeto lo del agua, respeto lo de las personas que no tienen donde vivir, pero estos niños no tienen voz. Perdón.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, I'm Sofía Lara. I have been a resident here for 44 years, and all of you deserve our respect, but none of you would be here if your moms wouldn't have given birth to you. And we applaud your mothers for having you. Children don't have a voice.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias, Estela. Thank you very much.
Ojalá que se pueda hacer algo, porque no es justo estos chiquititos que no tienen una voz. Mi voz está para decir a todos ustedes que ojalá se pueda hacer algo. Buenas noches y gracias.
Gracias, Estela. Thank you. Okay, move along with public communication. Thank you. Hey, Cristina.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and residents of Baldwin Park. I am Cristina Larios, the library manager at the Baldwin Park Library. I have two announcements I wanted to share with you this evening. First of all, I'm very excited to announce that LA County Library has been named 2019 Library of the Year by the educational publishing company Gale and the trade publication Library Journal.
Wow.
This prestigious award, thank you. This prestigious award honors a library system nationwide that most profoundly demonstrates service to the community, creativity and innovation in developing community-specific programs, and leadership in creating programs that can be emulated by other libraries. To commemorate this significant achievement, LA County Library is inviting local community members to join a celebration at all of its 85 locations on Wednesday, June 26th, with special programming and refreshments. We will celebrate this special honor at our Baldwin Park Library next Wednesday, June 26th at 3:00 p.m. We invite everybody to join us for an afternoon of comedy and juggling with Michael Rayner. And after the show, enjoy free refreshments and share with us the reason why you love your library. Refreshments will be sponsored by our wonderful friends of the Baldwin Park Library, and we hope you all can join us. I also wanted to announce tonight that I've accepted a promotion with LA County Library and will be leaving my position as manager. In my new position, I will be the regional youth services coordinator, working closely with all of the children's librarians in this area to make sure that we continue to provide the best programs and resources for all the families and children in the communities that we serve. I've truly enjoyed my time at Baldwin Park Library and want everyone to know that this community will always hold a special place in my heart. I will continue to work closely with my staff to make sure there's a smooth transition until a new manager arrives. I want to especially thank you, Mayor Lozano, council members and staff, for all the support you've given me these past three years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cristina. We're going to miss you.
Thank you. I will miss all of you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving along with public communication.
Buenas tardes, señor alcalde y miembros de la junta, pero también a nuestro público. Soy Toña Ríos, pastor de la Iglesia Metodista Unida en Baldwin Park. Rossi va a traducir por mí, voy a hablar en español.
Well, thank you.
Como todos sabemos, hace unos años atrás, la ciudad de Baldwin Park se pronunció como una ciudad santuario.
As many of you have know, a few years back, the city of Baldwin Park announced itself or claimed itself to be a sanctuary city.
Pero estamos viendo estas acciones nuevas que trae el presidente Trump, que no son acciones positivas para una comunidad indocumentada, para una comunidad de bajos ingresos, como lo acabamos de oír. Entonces tenemos miedo.
But we've seen with the new anti-immigrant actions that President Trump is willing to take, it's not actions that are for low-income communities and especially communities who are undocumented, and so our community has fear.
Y la pregunta para ustedes es, cómo está preparada la comunidad, cómo estamos preparándonos para esta ola anti-immigrante que viene a esta comunidad y a las comunidades más pobres, como son la de Baldwin Park y otras alidañas. ¿Qué estamos haciendo y qué podemos hacer para trabajar juntos?
And so, my question today is, how are we being prepared to, for these waves of anti-immigrants? And how are we preparing the community, especially that are targeting the undocumented community and the low-income community like the one here in Baldwin Park?
Y quisiéramos oír respuesta de ustedes. Muchas gracias.
I'd really like to get a response from you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a translator, please? Go and translate from there. Okay. Buenas tardes a todos, o buenas noches ya.
Buenas noches.
Una de las cosas primeras que quiero hablar es de los cinco que están aquí, que están por la comunidad de Baldwin Park, okay? Una de las cosas que estamos mirando, no nomás en esta ciudad, pero en otras ciudades, como salió en el papel, que el único que está haciendo dinero son los abogados. Lo que estamos pagando los abogados para cualquier cosa. Y eso...
Good afternoon. One of the topics I would like to speak is to the five of you today who are present. And it's not only being seen here in the city, but in other cities. We are paying a lot of money to the attorneys that are serving the city.
Por una cosa que salió en el papel hace como una semana y media, de la comunidad del water board de Fontana, donde están acusando, no nomás al señor Pacheco, al ex-chief de la comunidad de Baldwin Park, señor Taylor, y el abogado.
The city, we, he's speaking about council member Pacheco, former chief of police Michael Taylor, and our current city attorney, who serve in the water board and their affiliation and the news that's been going around in the newspapers.
So una cosa que quiero saber si ustedes tienen bastante valor, que pueden decirle hasta aquí llegó este abogado, porque no más estamos pagando para él. Yo sé que él les dio dinero para la campaña.
And I want to ask of you, this council today, if you have enough valor to say enough with the city attorney. I know that he does contribute to your campaign. I know that he does contribute to your campaign.
Una de las cosas que la comunidad ya está cansado de estar pagando tanto dinero, no nomás en las demandas que los dio la chief de police, Lily, pero también las otras cosas que estamos viendo también en el futuro que es la demanda del Salsedo.
Our community is tired of paying money, not just for the current lawsuit of Lily Hatzel, but also future lawsuits like the Salsedo case.
So es lo que queremos mirar, si van a parar todo esto que está pasando aquí en la ciudad. Yo sé que el jefe de policía ahora, que se llama Johnny Patino, está corriendo la policía, pero está, lo está corriendo muy mal.
So we would like to see if you are going to put a stop to this. And Johnny Patino, who is now the current chief of police, is not running the department very well.
Una de las cosas que hemos mirado, que la policía sí verá poquitos más de oficiales en la comunidad, pero al mismo tiempo manda, por una cosa menor, manda dos o tres carros al accidente.
The police has gained officers, but I also want to mention at the same time, four, three to four officers or officer cars are being sent for minor calls.
Okay, y ahora, ahora, ahora voy a cambiarme para Public Works. Señor Guterres, yo te llamo porque yo te quiero dar información, lo que está pasando en la comunidad y la gente que me trae. Había un colchón que te llamé y nunca me contestaste para atrás. No nomás ese colchón duró un mes y medio en el mismo lugar y pasaban los troques del Waste Management, los troques de la ciudad, y nadie lo levantaba. En el Calisack enfrente de Walnut Creek había trash bags ahí como diez días antes que lo levantaran. Ustedes quieren tener la comunidad limpia, pero ustedes no están haciendo su trabajo.
I also wanted to say for the Public Works, the Public Works Director, I call you because the community calls me to contact you about information that's going on in the community. For a month I had been trying to contact you with no response. There was a mattress in a location. I also called the Waste Management and to no avail, they didn't pick it up. Salisack trash bags-
A month and two weeks.
Have been there for ten days, and they haven't been picked up.
Por eso les llamo. Ustedes trabajan por la comunidad, no trabajan, trabajan por la ciudad, pero trabajan también por la comunidad. Si no van a hacer su trabajo, levanten sus garritas y vámoslos.
You work for the community and not just for you. And if you're not willing to work for the community, then you need to leave.
So a ver qué hacemos ahora que ya les traje el problema que tiene la comunidad, no nomás con el abogado, pero también con todos ustedes, que no más se la están pasando sin hacer nada.
Let's see what you can do, not just with the issues of the city attorney, but with other issues that you are not doing anything about.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening.
Buenas noches. Me llamo María Delgado. Tengo este, tengo un pequeño negocio por la Garbi y la Waco. En menos de seis meses ya han habido dos accidentes muy fuertes, este, a causa de la curva. Este, y no hay ningún anuncio de slow down, algo que esté flashando. Casi se matan las personas ahí. Es mi propiedad y me la han dañado ya tres veces.
Okay, momento. Go ahead.
I'm María Delgado. ¿Un negocio o una residencia?
I have a bit.
Yeah, I have a business and there have been various accidents and there's no-
A business and a house. And then, and the house is where they've been the big-
Where at? Where, what's that?
It's on Garbi and Waco.
Oh, okay.
And there've been two, two big accidents, real bad. One just, the last one just happened on the twenty-fifth of May. And it was this girl, four-twenty-three-year-old, and she made a big mess over there. And, you know, I'm scared because it just come to my, to my property. And it's on the curb, and it doesn't have any flashes or nothing to slow down. And I think that's what we need. Plus, they fixed the road, you know, and the sizes of the street. And I think, and there's been a lot of accidents because of that too. They open, they make like a little circle around there. And it's the, it's the school zone over there too. So I don't know if you guys can do something about it. It's just next to the Royal Motels Hotel. That's where I, where I'm talking about. And there's been three accidents, big accidents right there. So we need something to flesh out on the curb, because that's where they come very fast. Okay?
All right, thank you very much. We'll have one of the police officers, someone from the chief's office and Public Works. We could work on that together, okay? So we could get your number here on the side. I appreciate that, okay?
And then they just barely put another, a wrong sign for the sweep. And they put me the wrong one. We always, the sweeper comes every, the first and the third, and now it changes. They just changed the post, I don't know why, this week. So we need a new sign.
We'll have Mr. Guterres, San Guterres, Public Works Director, look that for you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right, moving along with public communication. All right, seeing no further interest, oh, yes.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'm Mario Mastell, planning commissioner. Here tonight, hoping that, I know my term has come up to an end this month, and I'm hoping to be re-elected again for planning commission. I hope that goes well. And a few other things that I wanted to touch bases on that I heard tonight, in particular to the community meeting that we've been having at St. John the Baptist. The couple that was spoken about actually lives here at the Rome Project. And from what rumor has, is that from the seventy-eight, or however many units are there, only four of them are affordable housing, only four. When I came to find that out, it really tore me up inside to know that we put up a building in hopes to house a lot of people that are in crisis. Four? It wasn't right. I would love to get the opportunity to talk to the developer or to whoever's managing this place to see if we could come to a solution, because this particular couple says that every six months they're being hit with a notice for rent increase. And as I spoke before on the previous council meeting, there are people that are getting hit with twenty-five percent increases in the city. And I'm still waiting to see what's going to be done about that. I requested to see if we can put a freeze on rent increases for at least a few months so we could come to a resolution, and I still haven't heard back from any of you guys. And the last thing I wanted to touch base on, Sam, if possible, on the corner of Los Angeles and Center, they've been redoing the corners for the past three weeks, I will say. Unfortunately, there's been this ditch that's been open for over a week now, which just recently got covered halfway. And it's exposed only, it's covered with cones, but it's only a matter of time before somebody turns that corner. I know pumpkin or the teal turns on that corner before somebody comes in with a lawsuit against the city for that. So if someone could please take a look at that and get it taken care of. I don't know who's actually working on that. Didn't look like it was our guys from Baldwin Park. So whatever company it is that's doing that for us, they need to be contacted. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, anyone else pushing to speak on their public communication? If not, I'll go ahead and declare it closed. All right, first of all, let me just start out with the first one that Rooney spoke about, the seven million dollars. Well, the city is insured up to three hundred thousand dollars. So at this point, that's a good part. However, we may be liable for about one point three million dollars of that particular area. We are, currently have appealed the actual process itself, so we'll keep everyone informed through the newsletter as well and through our web so that everyone knows what's transpiring over that potential lawsuit, which would involve former chief Lily Hatzel and being fired by three councilmembers. Also, yes.
Mayor, can I interrupt you by stating that you and I were on the city council at the time of those decisions?
Been opposed.
And we opposed the termination of Lily Hatzel. That means that the lawsuit that was brought against the city was not our responsibility. And I think it's important that the public knows that. Whenever that item is mentioned, neither was Paul Hernandez nor Alejandro Avila associated with that. They weren't on the city council at the time. And I think it's important that the public knows that, because that is a very detrimental cost to our city. Whether it's one million or up to seven million, it's a very, it's a, it's going to be hard for us to absorb that hit. And I want to make sure that, you know, unfortunately, there are two councilmembers that are no longer on this dais and a third that terminated the chief of police at the time, Lily Hatzel. That's what brought the lawsuit against the city, and that's what resulted in the seven million dollars. But it's important that when we talk about that item, that you know that the mayor and I were on the city council at the time and we did not, we opposed that termination. So just, just for clarity.
All right, all right, thank you. And so that, of course, will be forthcoming, so more information will be provided to-
Mayor, just to add to that, also, at the time of the termination, I don't want to relive the whole case, but there was issues of towing of those undocumented persons and a lot of other issues that came that were not pleased with their performance, and that's why I came to that conclusion among other things. But also, there's an insurance that's covering the cost of those, you know, when we get sued in that manner. We have an insurance that pays for a portion of it. We're also appealing it. And there was a number of issues that happened in the case that, that I believe why we didn't prevail in that case. A number of our witnesses, for example, was not allowed to go and speak on behalf of the city. And there was other issues that happened in the case that I felt that, you know, we have reason to appeal, and that's being considered, you know, at this time. So that's, you know, those are issues that need to be considered also. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, may I continue, finish off with everything there?
I say something really quick.
Go ahead.
First of all, thank you, Ms. Garcia, for saying that I wasn't part of council, neither was Mr. Hernandez, and that you didn't vote on that. However, I appreciate the fact that the community is coming up informing us of their concern, because when they hear seven million dollars, it's their money that we're talking about. I feel we need to move forward. We're appealing the case. And we need to move forward, whether, whether it was me that fired Chief Hatzel or whoever it was. It's something that has happened, and we have learned from it, I hope. We need to move forward, and when the community has questions, let's just move forward with those questions, and let's hope that appeal goes well and just put that behind us and learn from it again. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Just piggybacking off of Councilmember Avila and Garcia, the question that was asked is how is this going to affect the community?
Yes.
So again, you know, I'm in supportive of the appeal, but if not, you know, what we're looking at is paying a million dollars out of our general fund or our reserves. So what that means is, that's a million dollars that comes out of services that we would provide for our community, such as supportive housing, homeless services, senior, programs for our seniors, programs for our individuals, and also expanded services for our police department. So that is a direct correlation from the decisions that we make moving forward and from the past. But I just want to make very, I just want to be very clear in regards to that, because that does have a direct correlation to services that we could provide for our, for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, so at this point, I'll go ahead and move on. All right, secondly, was also mentioned about Main Street. Of course, the actual curbs and improvement that we have. So if we could get a meeting going with the fire department, just to kind of see, get their input referencing to that particular area. And also Christina, she left, the librarian, what a phenomenal person. I've attended many functions at the library. And she, of course, we've had many great and outstanding librarians here. So look forward and acknowledging her at the concert prior to her leaving. I know we've given her a city plaque, so we'll go with a proclamation this time around. All right, also, the clinics, just to let everyone know, with reference to the actual clinics, the Planned Parenthood clinic that's proposed in the city of Baldwin Park. Of course, there's a lot, there's opposition to it, and then there's people that are for the actual clinic as well. So we have to acknowledge that there's two sites. Now, I would prefer something else besides the Planned Parenthood going in there. However, the city, the city does not have the right to deny a specific, that specific clinic there. They came in, they applied, and gone through the actual process. However, however, they have slowed down. So I don't know whether that means they may not go forward or they're looking at, at the particular project. So we don't know. That, I want to let the general public know that, so that everyone knows. So we don't know what's going to transpire. So we'll keep everyone, we'll keep everyone apprised as to what's transpiring. So maybe the mere fact that people are out there, that may be sending them a message. So I want to make it very clear. That may, si les, brevemente sobre la clínica que se ha propuesto en la ciudad de Baldwin Park. Nosotros como el gobierno municipal, no podemos, digo, no tenemos el derecho de negar a cualquier negocio que se propona en un lugar en la ciudad de Baldwin Park. Han aplicado, se han procesado varios documentos, pero ellos, no sé por qué motivo, están, is that lentos? Is that right word? Like slow down? Ha estado el movimiento muy lento, so no sé si es porque las personas que están en la esquina o saben que la comunidad no está en favor. Pero a la misma vez tenemos que respetar que van a haber personas que apoyan y personas también que no apoyan el proyecto. Eso simplemente les quiero decir a ustedes en este momento que el proyecto está demasiado lento. So no sé qué están pensando ellos en este momento. Así es que nosotros vamos a informar a nuestra comunidad sobre ese tema. So just want to make that very clear with reference to the clinic itself.
Mayor, also, may I add that the city is also looking at doing housing within that area, including that clinic? So hopefully, the developers will be able to look at that whole area and do housing as proposed to that clinic. I know there's a lot of clinics in Baldwin Park, but possibly the housing that I think we need more would be, would be able to be constructed. So today, at one of our meetings, we talked about doing some housing projects. Hopefully, it extends into that area, but I know they're, they're looking at that, and hopefully that will go in that direction. So anyways, just wanted to add that, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. All right, in reference to Donald Trump, one of the individuals that came up here and talked about, of course, as we know, now he's talking about deporting millions of people, and it's all just propaganda, and it's about his campaign coming up around the corner. And that's the unfortunate part, because innocent people get hurt over that type of language that this, that this person brings up, and that's the unfortunate part about him. Now, what's the city doing? Yes, we are a sanctuary city, and we obviously want to make sure that we protect, we protect our residents and those that are here that don't have the resources. So we're going to continue to work as we, as we as a city need to do to be able to have those individuals that have lesser than some of us. And of course, as we all know, immigrants are the ones that make this state and this county and this city move. If it wasn't for the cheap labor, just like that president has had, but denies, you know, he wouldn't have the success that he's had, because it's been people, undocumented people, that built that man's fortune, but unfortunately, he's not going to recognize that. So we're going to continue to be vocal about it and to make sure that we support these hard-working people that deserve, that deserve to be legalized as Americans, because they deserve it. And we all know that. So I just want to make that. I refer to the president as a bozo, as un payaso, and that's, that's my reference to that president. But nevertheless-
I want China to speak to the Rome Project.
Yeah, after, I definitely will. And so with reference also to Mr. Ríos, he talked about the trash. Let's make certain that we follow up that as he requested, so we're on that. And Mr. Luna mentioned about the taxes. First of all, the city cannot impose a tax on anyone, no city in the state of California, all fifty-eight counties, because it's four eighteen or two eighteen? Is it two eighteen? It was passed by the voters many years ago that if the taxes or a city wants to raise taxes, it has to go to the voters. And even becomes much tougher, because it's two-thirds of the votes. And a good example is the city of Los Angeles, just held that election to, for monies needed for the schools, and the residents voted it down. So that's just an example of that particular area. And also with reference to the resident that just came up here over the Waco area, we want to make certain that we're, we follow up on that with the PD and with the Public Works. works. Um, want to also say that, what, the metro village, which was just talked about right now, uh, we'll ask the um, or the chief executive officers to bring up a report back as to how that operates, because of course, we're all under the understanding that it was, it was designed and built for people that have less resources, so it's important for us. And if there is this particular type, thank you very much, if that is occurring, then we expect to have answers. Now, you also mentioned, Commissioner, about about the city stopping, uh, you know, the rent, the rent control or implemented, we can't do it. I mean, my preference would have to be for, well, local government just can't simply do it. It doesn't work that way. I think that maybe it's something that we need to consider and take it to the voters to see what they ultimately want to see in the city of Ballon Park. So I just want to address that. So anything else?
Mayor, I just want to thank everybody that came up and spoke and voiced their concerns. It's greatly appreciated. Again, you're our eyes and our ears, so please continue to come up to the dais and give us whatever information we need up here. Thank you.
All right, at this point, yes.
May I just quick, um, comment here? I I just would like staff uh to get back on the Rome Project. One of our commissioners brought up a concern if there's only four affordable uh renters there. I want to get the full report, uh, go back and ask them, you know, where are they with with these rents, uh, you know, if there's four and more. Uh, I know that when they started, they had a lot, you know, they had quite a bit. It was all mostly affordable housing. So if you could ask them that, and also because they're doing another proposal, um, if there's something in that E and A that we had over there that's now somehow allowing them to go market rate and affordable, I'm gonna have a big issue with them coming back and doing another project, and we're gonna have to correct that old E and A. But anyways, get down to the bottom of it, let's find out. And on another note, along with Rome, um, I went to the senior citizen dances that I was at, one of the uh, or several of the occupants, they talked about how somehow the balconies weren't built correctly, and when it would rain, they would fill with water, and then they would spill over to the next balcony. I don't think that got resolved, but if you could look into the the balcony issues of them overflowing during the rains and how it is that they cured that issue, if if at all.
Okay.
At this Rome Project, yes.
Mayor, I'd like to ask Shannon Yocci, our CEO, to give us some brief bullet points on the Rome Project.
Um, yes, we will certainly uh look into this rumor. I am positive, um, there's probably not a lot of truth to it. Uh, these were approved as a hundred percent affordable, um, according to the LA County standards. They are deed restricted, and I believe it's for 55 years, though they have to remain uh affordable for 55 years. Um, if they don't, they would probably lose any state, federal, and city funding they were given, and they would probably go into default. Um, so we'll definitely look into that. Now, um, the county does raise annually sometimes uh the standard for uh the affordable limits, and that might be raised um annually by a a cost of living that usually equates to inflation, um, but that would be a very small percent. So we will definitely look into this and get back to council and confirm that.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, so at this point, I want to thank all the audience that's been here. Muchas gracias a las personas que estuvieron aquí hoy. Uh, all right, so at this point, I'd like to go over to the consent, excuse me, yes, let me read, thank you, City Attorney. I'm gonna read the, this, this to announce that as required by government code, section 5495, uh, 2.3, members of the city council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening, and each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting and $50 for attending the Finance Authority meeting. All right, thank you very much, Legal Counsel. At this point, I'll open up the consent calendar, council members wishing to pull any items out. At this point, boy, we have a whole lot, don't we?
Uh, Mayor, I don't need to pull item six, but I wanted to make a comment and a clarification for the public, recommendation number two. Um, just to be clear, where it says to include one new position, that really should say to inclu- include one new job description, and that's what we're approving under that item as a job description and not a new position. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and that will be on the record. So at this point, council members wishing to bowl any item?
Fifteen.
Okay, number fifteen. Any other council members?
Um, yes, Mayor, just, I just, I lost it, hold on, I'm headed here.
Fine.
Okay, City Manager, there was an item here in regard to um our transportation, that they were trying to change some funds. Which one was that, do you remember?
Uh, is that the number nine, transfer funds for dial-a-ride?
Yeah, I got a question on that. Item nine.
All right, so at this point, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco wishes to pull under item number nine. Council, any others? All right, so if not, at this point, I will make a motion of consent items, with the exception of items, uh, excuse me, nine, nine and fifteen. That's my motion, or second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Monica Garcia. Any objections? See, none, so move. All right, item number nine requested by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, uh, reads approval of funds transferred and appropriations of additional funds for the Ballon Park Transit Service Dial-A-Ride and Trolley Program. Councilmember?
On the staff report, there was a a statement made that somehow the funds were inadvertently taken out of the wrong fund. So are these funds now being corrected to the correct funds, or was it taken out of general fund? I just wasn't clear when I read that report.
Yeah, um, yeah. Uh, thank you, Councilmember. So, yeah, the funds were um, uh, pulled from the correct fund, so it's all transportation funding. Uh, this staff report just corrects or delineates expenditures between the fixed route, which is part of the same fund, and the dial-a-ride. So for tracking purposes and reporting purposes, we want to know exactly how much we spend for dial-a-ride, and this just corrects that. So we're moving um funds between, we're moving funds between the same fund, but for different accounts, one for dial-a-ride and the other for fixed route.
Okay, so this is all within the same transportation fund?
This is all within the same fund.
It's not general fund money or?
Yeah.
Okay. A second question is just out of curiosity, is, can you do um some sort of certificates for transportation that would include using Uber or Lyft? I don't know if that's, anybody's ever done that, but just something to?
So that's, um, so, yeah, that's, that's becoming a thing, so we, it's something that we're keeping our eye on, and we're taking a look into, and if uh the council's asking us to do it, we'll um reach out to those entities and see what we can do.
Yeah, I'm just curious if it's, if it's a possibility. All right, that's it, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. At this point, I'll go ahead and make a motion to pass item number fifteen, that's my motion.
Number nine.
Number nine, excuse me.
Number nine.
That's my motion.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Monica Garcia, any objections? See, none, so move. All right, so at this point, we'll go over to item fifteen requested by Councilmember Hernandez, which reads a reapproval of the amendment to the Area D Mutual aid Joint Powers Authority Agreement. Councilmember?
Thank you. I just wanted to bring this up as a, as more of an item of note. Um, these, this uh JPA kind of provides a little bit of, just some context for us, um, as we're looking at preparedness efforts to better serve our community. This JPA uh serves over 22 cities, and what, this, uh, we'll piggyback on some of the work that we're doing with the police department, along with the American Red Cross, which I'm hoping uh we'll bring that back uh at the end of July or sometime soon. Uh, so this is a, again, just one of those items in which not only does the city collectively work on its preparedness and efforts, but it also does it in a collaborative way with our neighboring cities here in the San Gavirra Valley. I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to pass item, item fifteen. Uh, that is my motion.
Second.
Second, uh, who seconded it?
I did.
Okay, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, any objections? See, none, so move. All right, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, we'll go over to um, the successor agency, thank you. Um, we have the, let's say, one successor agency to dis- to dissolve the Community Development Commission. So at this point, I'll go ahead and, we need a motion for this, right? I'll go ahead and make a motion for the successor agency to dissolve Community Development Commission of the City of Ballon Park Treasurers Report, April 2019. That is my motion.
Receive and file.
Does this receive and file?
I'll second.
Second by Council, Vice Mayor Monica Garcia, any objections? See, none, so move. All right, I've got a lot of hearings here. Public hearing, eighteen, adoption of the budget for fiscal year 2019-20 for the city finance authority, municipal finance authority, housing authority, and successor agencies. Does anyone have any questions?
Uh, I just want to bring an item of note in regards to our upcoming fiscal budget year.
Yes, sir.
Um, just, again, just want to thank the departments, specifically the police department, in looking and analyzing the uh the numbers and figures there, in which we are going to be able to increase our police presence by a number of four officers. Um, so again, just want to thank everyone, but specifically staff, Shannon, and Rose, uh, to be, to be able to really look at the numbers in a different perspective, to be able to increase our police presence and our department by four individuals. Thank you.
All righty, thank you very much. At this point, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing, so anyone wishing to speak in favor, you come up here at this point. Anyone opposing? See no interest. All right, so at this point, I'll go ahead and move, uh, staff recommend that council open, excuse me, uh, fiscal year 2019-20 budget for the city Ballon Park Resolution number twenty nine, 2019-033, for the finance authority by Resolution Number FA 2019-001, for the municipal financing authority by Resolution Number MFA 2019-001, for the housing authority by Resolution Number HA 2019, and the successor agency, what was that? All right, okay, yeah, sorry about that, thank you. All right, so, so no interest in the public hearing, I'll go ahead and declare it closed at this point. Thank you, Legal Counsel. So at this point, I'll get back to my motion, that is my motion for the adoption of.
All right, second.
Okay, second, any objections? See, none, so move. Thank you very much, Rose, and everyone as well. Phenomenal job. All right.
Mayor, just real quick, again.
Yes, sir.
My kudos to finance, you guys did a wonderful job.
Absolutely.
Your presentation was right spot on, you hit all the right issues. Uh, OPIB, is that the one that you did very innovative, what you did, uh, the state required us to, the POV bond? Can you explain that a little bit, uh, what you did there that was unique, how you got the bond to, to pay for that?
We issued the POV bond to pay down the unfunded liability with the pension obligation with CalPERS. The main reason we can reduce and provide long-term savings, we take the advantage of the lower market interest rate, which is about 3.7% compared to 7% that CalPERS charge. That's why we, the city is able to save about $23 million over the next 30 years.
Wow, that's awesome.
Okay, and and this loan is to put money that the state requires us for future retirements and healthcare, is that what that money was for?
Yes, because due to the existing employees and based on the retired employees, number of retired employees and the full-time and possible employees, and CalPERS continue to accumulate the unfunded liability to set aside for what they expected to require to fund the future retirement.
All righty, okay, any other questions?
Uh, just one more item, and I know this was an afterthought, but if staff could put this in the budget or at some other time, bring it back. I just wanted to have some sort of, um, uh, like, when we have announcements for community events, if we could put some type of, uh, posts like they have in other cities? You have these metal posts that they put in the, across the streets, and then they they announce their signs, and I don't know, if we could just look at that and put it in at some point.
Yes, and we will be bringing back a capital improvement budget for um infrastructure improvements to the city, so we can include that in the budget for the council's consideration.
All righty.
Thank you, that's it.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. All right, so at this point, we'll go ahead and open up the um public hearing. Also, a resolution of the city council of the city of Ballon Park confirming the advisory committee report and leaving the assessment that the Ballon Park citywide business improvement district fiscal year 2019-20. So at this point, I'll go and open up the public hearing. If anyone's in favor? Anyone opposed? See no interest, and I'll declare the public hearing closed. Councilmembers have any questions? If not, at this point, I'll go for, move for approval of item one and two, approve the fiscal year 2019 and 20-bit uh budget allocations, and two, approve Resolution Number Number 2019-024 entitled, A Resolution of the City Council of the City Ballon Park, Confirming the Advisory Committee's Report and Leaving the the Assessment of the Ballon Park Citywide Business Improvement District for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. That is my motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Alejandra Avila. At this point, any objections? See, none, so move. All right, this one will go over, the next public hearing, which is the item twenty, the public hearing and adoption of Resolution 2019-20, two, zero, zero, two, six, ordering the assessment for the citywide landscaping and lighting maintenance assessment, district fiscal, fiscal year 2019-2020. At this point, I'll go and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone opposing? See no interest, and I'll declare the public hearing closed. At this point, I'll go ahead and move, uh, for, um, this point, is this receive and file and receiver, just, you know, hold the public hearing, excuse me, a resolution of city council of the city Ballon Park, uh, ordering the annual levy and collections of assessment associated with citywide landscaping and lighting maintenance assessment district fiscal year 2019-2020, and authorizing the Los Angeles County assessors to add the special assessment to the property tax bill. That is my motion, or second?
Second.
Thank you, my Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Any objections? See, none, so move. All right, item twenty-one, which is the public hearing and adoption of the Resolution Number 2019-027, ordering the assessment for the citywide park maintenance district fiscal year 2019-2020. At this point, I'd like to open up the public hearing, so anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? See no interest, and I'll declare the public hearing closed. At this point, I'm gonna go ahead and make a, a motion, a resolution of the city council of the city of Ballon Park, ordering the annual levy and collection of assessment associated with the citywide park maintenance assessment district fiscal year 2019-2020, and authorizing the Los Angeles County assessors to add the sp- this special assessment to the property tax bill. That is my motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Any objections? See, none, so move. All right, so at this point, let me see, uh, we'll go over to the item twenty-two.
Mayor, can we move that over for the next meeting?
Actually, um, that one is a time of the essence, uh, as HUD is waiting for this report, and we're at a very late time in the process due to cancellation of the last meeting. It's unlikely, but it could result in loss of funds if we delay it further.
President, let's just go and do this, we'll go ahead and pass it.
Oh, let's just pass it out.
Oh, yeah, but let me open up the public hearing, the, okay, at this point, I'd like to open up number twenty-two, which is the fiscal year 2019-2020, Community Development Grant CDBG and Home Investment Partner Partnership Funds Home Annual Action Plan. At this point, I'd like to open up the public hearing, so anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? See no interest, and I'll declare the public communicate, the public communication closed, the public hearing, excuse me. So at this point, like, go ahead, and I'll move for the approval of the CDBG and Home fiscal year 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan, including all fiscal year 2019-2020 CDBG and Home Program and Project funding. That is my motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alejandra Avila, Councilmember. Thank you very much. Item twenty-three, a request to the city council from the planning commission to approve development agreement, uh, nineteen zero one nine, to grant a cannabis permit for the new manufacturing and cultivation facility with the IC industrial commercial zone pursuant to ordinance of fourteen zero eight, location one five two nine Virginia Avenue, applicant E Source LLC, case number DA one nine dash zero one. So at this point, I'd like to open up the uh, the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor?[1667.15] public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. See no interest, and I'll declare the public hearing closed. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion as an ordinance of the city council of the city of Ballin Park, authorizing the city of Ballin Park to enter into a development agreement with the E Source, E Source LLC for the cultivation and/or manufacturing of cannabis at the real property located at 5129 Virginia Avenue, APN 88, pipe 58, dash 032, dash 031, within the city ballpark. That is my motion. Is there a second? The second by, uh, council member Alejandra Avila. At this point, any objections? See none, so move. Whoa. Mike Tui, we're almost there. Kind of dozing off back there. All right. So at this point, we're going to go ahead and go into the reports of officers, uh, the review of the commission. Let's move this over. Let's move that over. Second, any objections? See none, so move. All right. The next one is requested by council member Ricardo Pacheco for the city council discussion and direction to staff, way of motion on the following. Council member Ricardo Pacheco.
Okay. I'll be quick on this one.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm, I would like to have a discussion and provide direction to staff to drop the letter to Caltrans, my P here, and the state representatives, Veronica over there, uh, for, and the mayor and council signatures expressing their despleasure with the continued delays in the construction of the Interstate Tenir Puente. Furthermore, Caltrans has not been responsive in responding to staff requests to discuss and resolve issues pertaining to the sound walls harming businesses and remainder properties that Caltrans should rightfully dispose of. The delays are harming businesses and our already disadvantaged community. That means on Puente Avenue, when you get on that freeway, uh, and especially the underpass, it continues to be just blighted. They don't maintain it. They need to put, you know, what they said that we're going to put there, trees and shrubs and all that, and, and just complete it. I don't know why it doesn't get completed. You just got to finish it off. Every other intersection, all the way down the freeway, is being, is completed, except they leave this one for like the last three years, has not been done. So we would like our state representatives to get involved and have Caltrans clean up that area. Next to, um, Kaiser Hospital, they have a Caltrans office. It looks disastrous. I've been in other cities, and I've noticed that they've always been well-kept. I'm asking that they keep this one the way they do, uh, those in, in other cities. So hopefully staff, council, we could move forward on that.
Yes, sir. Yes. So let's, let's get that letter, and we'll send it out, Councilman.
And Mayor speak...
So go ahead. I just want one more. I, I just, I would like the, um, city staff public works to do an assessment of all county, uh, uh, properties and make sure that they're maintained. Let's create a list of all county properties and make sure that they're, uh, keeping them well-maintained in our city. And, and also, if you could make one of city property, I would like you to make a list of all our city properties, make sure they're, and then review them, make sure they're being, uh, well-kept, and then come back to and report to the city. I guess I can give you, um, till the end of June, July, August, to give you enough time to do that. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. That is Alejandra.
And speaking of Caltrans, I have a question. Um, maybe this is a SAM question. The bridge that connects Ballin Park to Almani, that place is a disaster. You can't see the lanes. The road is cracking. Who's responsible for that bridge? There's weeds growing all the time.
Is, is this along Ramona Boulevard?
On Ramona Boulevard. I'm sorry. Yes. Connects Ballin Park and Almani. If you drive on that bridge, it's horrible.
Absolutely. Yeah. We, we will look into it. The portion that's over the Caltrans, um, the freeway, that's, that's Caltrans responsibility, and we were working with them. And then, uh, the other portion, um, I believe there's, um, LA County has, uh, they have the, uh, the wash, the Sangue River, sorry. So they, they would be responsible for that portion.
Okay. I, I believe it's urgent. I don't know if you've driven by there in, anytime soon, but, uh, there's no lanes. You can't see where one side of the road connects to the other. It's dangerous. And, uh, again, the road's very cracked, and it's, the weeds are growing. It's just ugly. Please. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you very much, Councilmember Alejandra Avila. All right. So at this point, we're going, I'm going to go ahead and move for a German of the city council. That's my motion. Second by Councilmember Alejandra Avila. See, any objections? See none, so move.
Please, may I?
All right. So at this point, I'd like to open up the Finance Authority. At this point, I'd like to consent calendar, which is items one, which is the Treasures Report, April 2019. I'll go ahead and move for, for motion.
Second.
Hello?
Second.
Oh, uh, council member Hernandez, thank you very much. Any objections? See none, so move. This one, I'd like to move for a German of the Finance Authority. That is my motion.
Second.
Any objections? Council member Hernandez? No objections. Thank you. All right. At this point, I'd like to open up the, um, the Ballin Park Housing Authority. And, uh, we have the consent calendar, which is, uh, items one and two, the warrants and demands of Treasures Report. I'll go ahead and move for motion to approve...
I'll second that. And Mayor, can I also mention that I attended the Contract Cities Association, um, conference in May, and I attended a, um, session that highlighted homelessness. And, uh, there was a local city manager, Rachel Barbosa Rodriguez, who spoke of the collaboration with Ballin Park, Almani, South Almani. And she did bring up some numbers, and I'm curious about. Um, she says she's been in coordination with Eurico, and those numbers were like 3,000 homeless. So I want to know, how does she, where did those numbers come from? If you can ask Eurico and then get back to us. And that's it.
Are you making reference to the 266?
No. I'm talking about 3,000. That's what was presented at this conference.
For what, county?
No, for Ballin Park.
Wait, 3,000 what? Homeless?
That's what was presented.
So that may include the school district, because the school district have different regulations.
Exactly. That's why I want clarification.
Make count kids that are sleeping on a couch.
Right. I know, but that wasn't, that wasn't clear. So I want to get a better, you know, clarity there.
Yeah, you know what? Bring that up, because I'm even concerned about the 266 that was reported out. Uh, I know. And I just, I know we've got out on counts, and, I mean, I've talked to, um, lots of people that have been out there, even some officers that they, when they saw that number, it was just kind of little, those are, so let's try and, let's try and see what we can do. Get some clarification, because of course, want to be able to reach out, reach out in that specific area.
There's too many already.
Yes, I hear you. All right. So at this point, there was a, a, a motion and seconded by Vice Mayor, uh, Monica Garcia. So at this point, I'd like to go ahead and move for a German of the actual Housing Authority. Uh, thank you. Uh, and, uh, Vice Mayor, uh, seconded ahead of time. Okay. So at this point, good evening. Viva Ballin Park.
Good night.